Testing, testing.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we'll move on to the reading and disposal of the journal, meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2016.
Yes, Mr. President.
Are not prepared yet, so we will be passing the meeting minutes of October 24th. Councilman Frandorf.
Having read the council minutes of the council meeting held October 3rd, 2016, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Meeting minutes for October 24th, 2016 have been approved. We'll now move on to consent agenda number one. We'll move on to consent agenda number one. Councilman Frandorf.
Hi, Mr. President. If there's no division of the question, I move that we accept consent agenda number one dated November 14th, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Consent agenda number one has passed. Now we're going to move on to consent agenda number two, and Councilman Frandorf and myself are going to recuse ourselves from this vote.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we amend consent agenda number two, motion number four, to authorize the expenditure on the total amount from $921 to $840.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Consent agenda number two has been amended. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
If there's no division of the question, I move that we accept consent agenda number two for Monday, November 14th, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Consent agenda number two has been passed. Moving on to resolutions of commendation, resolution number 63, 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council reads resolution number 63, 2016 in its entirety.
By title only.
By title, by title only.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to mention that Helen Pacala has been an employee of the City of Seven Hills for 21 years in our finance department, and she has been just a terrific asset to the City of Seven Hills, and we are very grateful for the work that she's done, and we're going to miss her very much. Is there any further comment? Please read resolution 63, 2016.
Resolution number 63, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua La Quilla and councilperson Traffus, Frandorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. Resolution of commendation to Helen Pacala for 21 years of service at City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Resolution number 63, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Chairman, I move that council adopts resolution 63, 2016.
Any discussion? Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution 63, 2016 has been adopted. We are now moving on to resolution number 64, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules on the charter and read resolution 64, 2016 by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number 64, 2016, introduced by Mayor Delacqua La Quilla and councilperson Traffus, Frandorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro. A resolution of commendation to Michael Davis for 32 years of service at City of Seven Hills, Ohio, whereas Michael Davis has completed 32 years of valuable service to the City of Seven Hills, and where his council and all elected and appointed officials hereby specifically wish to honor and recognize Michael Davis for his outstanding service and dedication to our community. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, that appreciation of the mayor of council and all other elected and appointed officials is hereby extended to Michael Davis for his sincere dedication and active service to the community and the residents of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio. That the clerk of council be, and she is hereby authorized and directed to forward a certified copy of this resolution to Michael Davis immediately upon its adoption. That this resolution is hereby determined to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the City of Seven Hills, and for the further reason that same affects the day-to-day business of the municipality. Wherefore this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its adoption, otherwise at the earliest period allowed by law.
Resolution number 64, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we adopt resolution 64-2016.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to mention that Mr. Davis is in the room tonight. Mike, thank you for your many years of service to the City of Seven Hills. You've played a very important role in our service department, and your work has been very much appreciated, and we're certainly going to miss having you working for the city.
Mr. President. I echo those comments. I mean, he's been an excellent and dedicated mechanic. He kept the machines running, old and new, day and night. I couldn't ask for more. I wish we had clones of Mike, but all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Mayor Delacqua. Mike, we need to share with you, and I think you're hearing it here, how important you have been to the operations of this city for the three-plus decades that you've been with us. I know that toward the latter part of your career, you were the only mechanic at the garage, and how reliant we were upon you to keep the equipment operational. I think the fact that it was so difficult to find a replacement for you speaks volumes for how important your service has been to the city. As you may know, I'm a bit of an amateur mechanic. I've worked on engines and that kind of thing, but only as a hobbyist. I can only imagine the kind of dedication it took for you to work on this heavy equipment and all kinds of weather, sometimes in the middle of the night on emergency bases, and I just want you to know how appreciative the whole city is for your dedication and your service to our community. Thank you so much. Any further comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pignotello.
I would just like to congratulate you on your retirement. It's long and get, spend a lot of time doing what you want to do, and wish you nothing but the best.
Further comment?
I'd like to say, Mike, I congratulate you on your retirement, and having spent my entire career until I retired a few years ago in the heavy equipment industry, I know a little bit about what it takes to keep the equipment running. And I know that when I first was elected to council, one of the first things I did was go up to the service department, and you gave me a little tour of your area, and I've been up there a couple times since. And what people don't understand is when you're working on heavy equipment, that iron gets cold, and they bring it in from the snow, and that slush is dripping off the equipment, and you've got to crawl under it and fix something. That's when you really earn your money. So, Mike, I know what you went through. It's a tough job, but I got to tell you, our trucks never missed a beat, and we owe it to you. And I'll echo what the mayor said. You know, you were the guy. So appreciate all your efforts and really enjoy your retirement. You deserve it.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody further? Okay, please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Traffus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Resolution number 64, 2016 has been adopted, and if, Mike, you'd approach the podium here, and we can present this to you. Mike, if you feel like making any comments, you're welcome to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving on to reports of committees. The Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on October 17th. Those meeting minutes are filed with a clerk, and the next meeting will be held on November 21st. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting on the 7th, and minutes are on file with the clerk.
Thank you. Community Services Committee, Councilman Bicker.
Yes, Mr. President. We met on the 7th, and our next minutes are filed with the clerk, and our next meeting is the 5th of December.
Thank you. Police and Safety Committee, Councilman Kranek.
Yes, Mr. President. Police, Fire, and Safety, last minute on October 17th. Our next meeting will be November 21st.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was on October 17th. Our next meeting is November 21st, and the meeting minutes from the last meeting are forthcoming.
Thank you. Rules, Ordinances, and Ethics, Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was November 7th. Those meeting minutes are pending. Our next meeting will be December 5th.
Thank you. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Frandorf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was November 7th. The next meeting will be held on November 21st, and the council president assures me that the meeting minutes from the 7th are forthcoming.
Thank you. Are there any appointments and confirmations, communications, petitions, and claims?
There are none.
Council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding any item on our agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Is anybody in the first row, second row, third row?
Okay, Bob Robel, 975 Winchester Oval. I'd just like to make a couple of comments about ordinance number 118. This to me seems to be kind of unusual. Well, let me preface this by saying that my feeling is that, and I think this might go without saying, when a person is acting as an official of the city or an agent of the city, they usually have certain legal protections, and that includes litigation or other court actions against that person while they're acting on behalf of the city. In this case, what kind of bothers me is that there was a guilty plea, and I think that changes the situation a little bit. In my mind, it puts into question whether or not the city needs to be liable for that. What I'm hoping is that as this ordinance comes up, that there is some discussion, because I wasn't privy to any extenuating circumstances or any other explanations, and I would appreciate it. I know it's not required, but that there'd be some discussion as to, first of all, why this should be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further?
Michelle Tameko, 7279, some of you. I just have a couple questions. If the city council is supposed to be so transparent, why so many executive sessions? Number two, why is the city using general funds to pay for Mr. Traffus's legal fees? Number three, was there any restitution or any other fees other than the attorney fees that this will be paid for? Number four, did you have any kind of E and O insurance, errors and omissions insurance, to cover the legal fees? And number five, why should other things be dropped, wages be cut, jobs be cut, and hiring freezes be put on that would bring extra money to the general fund, and the city has to pay for your legal fees? Just a couple of questions. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody further in the audience?
Jerry Traffus, 990 Aspenwood Drive, former mayor of Seven Hills. It's funny, because I've been coming to these council meetings recently over the last, I don't know, four or five months. I've been carrying around some notes, knowing that today would be coming in the political agenda and political forum that this city is so well-known for. And I thought I would, and Matt, I don't know if you're going to like this or not, but I'm going to say a few things about some of the details, because obviously I lived this with you, and I lived this with the city being the former mayor. And I want everybody, and Bob, I think this will answer some of your questions pretty well. And Michelle, I know you and I just had a little bit of a discussion. I had a chance to finally meet you. And yeah, well, now you do. And Michelle and I had a little bit of a back and forth, too, and I think this will help also. I'm not going to go into extreme depth, but I think what's important is to listen to some of the dates and some of the things that just happened here, and Megan, this is great for you to hear, too. This is what I was trying to say to you. Back in August 7th of 2014, a little bit more than a couple years ago, Seven Hills Council President Barth convened a special council meeting in August, which was when we were on recess, to pass ordinance 124, 2014, authorizing a $65,000 study of Rockside Road for the development potential in conjunction with the newly established partnership with the City of Independence. I don't know if you guys remember. Five of you guys are new. Stuart, you're kind of new, but you were back and forth, but this was like, hurry up, hurry up, let's get this fast, blah, 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 and they did, and it was a good thing to do. So that was in August of 2014, and the big thing was establishing this partnership between Independence and Seven Hills. Great, that's what we needed. On August 28th of 2014, three weeks later, Independence issued a formal letter and a memorandum saying Longbow Research had an employee payroll of $6.5 million, at least $130,000 of tax revenue to Seven Hills per year, and a proposal to grant Longbow Research $285,000 of taxpayer money, Independence taxpayer money, to relocate to Independence. So that was on August 28th. It came out, formal letter, hey, Longbow is $6.5 million bucks, $130,000 income tax, and if you guys want, we're going to give you $285,000 to come here. Okay, they can do that. On September 9th of 2014, Independence passed legislation, formal legislation, public record, public everything. It was resolution 2014-125 to pay and the grant to Longbow Research if relocation independence occurred. So now we're into September. September 16th, here was our wonderful joint public meeting attended by hundreds of independents and Seven Hills residents at the Holiday Inn in Independence to promote this newfound partnership between the two cities on Rockside Road. This was the thing where we paid the $65,000 back in August, and you know, kumbaya, we're best partners in the world, and we all met at Holiday Inn kissing and hugging, as in September. In late October 2014, Matt announced, and it was in the paper, that he is considering running for mayor. That was October 14th. In late December 14th, Matt, and you can, you know, it's your meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, because these are my notes.
Go on.
In late December 14th, Matt became aware of the legislation passed by Independence back in September and known in August. That was passed September 9th, and began to research, how in God's name is Seven Hills Council hearing this for the first time, or at least, you know, you hearing it for the first time, and to get a handle and to evaluate if there was any way to stop this from occurring and to get Longbow to come back to Seven Hills and maybe do a counter offer to them. That was in December of 14th, and this subject, according to what my knowledge, is this was never brought up at all by the mayor, by the council president, by anyone on council. Again, correct me if I'm wrong for those of you that were around. In January, on January 2nd of 2015 or so, Matt called the Seven Hills Finance Director to verify $130,000 a year that was published by Independence in so many different letters and resolutions and... and resolutions and ordinances and everything else. And he basically said to the finance department, is this is a good number, in the hopes of being able to bring it up to caucus, to bring it up to council and see if there was any way to be able to stop Longbow from going to Independence, taking the ransom sum of $285,000 from Independence and possibly being able to retain that $130,000 of money to Seven Hills. Pretty logical question to me, kind of bare bones for a councilman to do. Finance Director was not present, Assistant Finance Director took the call that you had to try to verify that $130,000 and send it over to the income tax clerk. And the income tax clerk was instructed to provide the information. The clerk got on the phone with Matt and said, it's $126,700. $126,700. Matt said, okay, thanks. That evening, or let's see, that was January 2nd, January 5th, must have been a couple of days later, at the next caucus meeting, Matt brought up the subject of Longbow. Now again, you can go back and research this, I did, I went back to records and dug this out, went back to the January 5th meeting of council caucus and brought up the subject of Longbow relocating to Independence and how we were going to be, and how could this happen with this partnership we have and we're going to lose $126,700? As a first time council heard about it, except for Council President Mike Barth, who later denied, or excuse me, I take that back, who later said that, oh, I forgot to tell you guys about it.
That's exactly right.
Forgot to tell you about it. But at that meeting, you said $126,700, shame on you. At least shame on you according to the mayor and to Mike Barth, who stopped the meeting right at that time and said, what are you doing? You're not allowed to say that number? Now, if you said $130,000, it would have been okay, but you said $126,700, that was given to you by the clerk and told, the Assistant Finance Director told her to give it to you and you said that, trying to help the City of Seven Hills to be able to retain Longbow that we lost for God knows what reason, without even trying to make another proposal to keep them here. Guess what happened? That was January 5th. At that meeting...
Before you proceed, why don't you explain the discussions between the Finance Director, Jack Johnson, and the income tax clerk about what they should or should not do with contacting me with that information?
Well, from my knowledge of that, and I'm, you know, I think this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, when you approached everybody about that, because this became such a big deal, I believe that the Finance Director, Assistant Finance Director, said that they never should have told the clerk to give you that information.
And then when the clerk asked the mayor's Finance Director if we should call Matt to tell him not to use that information, the mayor's appointee said, no, let Matt hang himself. You're out of order right now, ma'am.
You can come back up if they allow you. Okay, so at that point, that's where we're at. Now, at that meeting of January 5th, our mayor was beyond reproach, and you can get into the tapes and listen to it, and stated he would pursue the termination of the Finance Department personnel that released the $126,700 figure and refer all to the prosecutor for criminal investigation. At the end of that meeting, Matt sent a letter to the law director describing all of this, dated January 6, 2015. Things, you know, that was the end of it at that point. Now guess what happened? On February 10th, less than a month later, about a month later, an anonymous complaint was made to the Ohio Attorney General Office of Mike DeWine. It says constituent anonymous, that's where you permanently put a name in there, last name anonymous, address anonymous, city anonymous, whoop, they got the zip code, 44131. And here's what it said. Description of the problem, a local councilman for the City of Seven Hills located in Cuyahoga County and by the name of Matthew Treffus appears to be collecting tax data of a private local company strictly for the use of personal or political gain. This has alarmed a number of residents as to the protection of our own personal tax information. As mentioned above, there is an overgrowing number of residents that find this deeply disconcerting. That's the complaint. That was it. And that's where we are today. And those charges were filed anonymously, they were pursued, and now there's a $5,000 bill out there for legal expenses for you acting, doing the job you should certainly be doing, and if you did anything less than that, I would probably kick your butt because you know better. And that's what some of the facts that should be known about this. Now this is only the tip of the iceberg, there's a lot more, a lot more. And I think it's important, Bob, I hope that answered your question, you were looking for some detail, I'm sure that that helped you out to some degree. And anytime this kind of stuff happens, guys, I guess you just got to watch your back. I have more, but I'm going to be quiet right now. Oh, and also, Michelle, no, I'm going to stop. I'm going to stop, thank you, thank you, council.
Thank you. And I'm going to add that I was informed today by numerous sources that, to continue the politics of this matter, that one of the individuals I contacted, certainly Channel 19 and possibly other media sources, was former Councilman Pete Dragnick, who has a reputation for filing information or complaints about council members, including Councilman Fandorf, myself and others. This is the exact reason why the status quo in Seven Hills needs to change. And I'll leave that, with that, and...
I have one quick question. Why did you file that you pled guilty? You pled guilty and you expect everyone in Seven Hills to pay for your guilty plea?
I am not answering that, that is something that happened in the court.
Then why should we pay for it? Why does the, why does the general fund have to pay for your guilty plea?
Thank you.
I just want to know.
Thank you for your comment.
That's just a general statement, I want to know.
I'm going to tell you right now.
I don't want you to tell me.
Well, no, he, no, of course, I am telling...
Guys. Is there anybody further in the audience? Excuse me, you don't have the floor right now, we need to keep this meeting in order. Excuse me, sir, please. Is there anybody further in the audience? Ben, you had your hand up first.
So, there's a couple of points. So first of all, I think it's valuable for the purpose of anyone who would ever consider being in an office in Seven Hills, to know that they have support, they can do what they think is in the interest of the office when they're carrying out those actions. And the current environment, even seeing that those legal fees are being paid for, I would never want to be on the current council right now, it's far too ugly. And second of all, Matt, thank you for pleading guilty and saving us the money of a drawn-out trial, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ben. Anybody further? Yep?
Jerry Treffus, 990 Aspenwood. I don't think you're going to say you shouldn't, Ben just did, but I know the reason that Matt did plead guilty was exactly what Ben said. We had a previous mayor where we spent over $200,000 in legal expenses on behalf of the city. I'll be darned if Matt was going to let anything go on to be able to proliferate any kind of legal expense. And it's a hell of a lot easier to plead guilty, save the city money. By the way, the attorney that you utilized, I think was only 120 bucks an hour, which normally these guys are like 5, 600, guy was doing it because he knew what was right and just. And for, and again, you can't, you shouldn't say this, Matt, but I will, I think you pleading guilty to save the money for the city, falling on the sword, knowing that you're going to have people that are coming out of the wDLR, like they are right now, and I'm hearing even some employees are trying to do that, there are subterfugees that may have had a decrease in their pay, is really admirable and I'm very proud of you.
Thank you, and just know that these things are going to continue to be pursued. Anybody further in the audience?
Carol Zupansik, 2725 Chestnut Road. My question is, don't you have insurance to cover something like this? And if you do, why do we have a legal bill?
Thank you. Anybody further? Anybody further? I'm not commenting on the details of my legal case. If he so chooses.
Our insurance doesn't cover any criminal damage.
Okay, moving on, ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 65-2016.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends rules under the charter and reads ordinance 65-2016 by title only for its final reading.
I second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Fandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 65-2016, introduced by councilperson Treffus, Fandorf, Barth, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow and Petro, in ordinance to men subsection 963.02E, location of heat pumps and air conditioning units, as contained in chapter 963, first residential districts of Title IX, zoning use districts of Part IX Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of revising the placement of heat pumps, air conditioning units, generators, full pumps or other mechanical equipment.
Ordinance number 65-2016 has been read for its third and final reading, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Petro.
I move that council passes ordinance 65-2016.
I second a motion, Mr. President. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Fandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes. Ordinance number 65-2016 has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number 89-2016.
Council President?
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we amend ordinance number 89-2016 by changing the word September in both the title and the second whereas clause, and also by adding the emergency.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Did you add the emergency?
Yes, I did.
He did. Oh, we don't need to, it's third reading. Just make the motion to amend ordinance number 89-2016 to change the purchase date from September to December, November, this is November. It will, Tim, second that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Fandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes, you asked for discussion, I'm sorry. I just want to point out that this is the third reading, is Carol Fandorf. This had been tabled, it's something that the police department needed, they, we've been trying to get this new vehicle and because of our financial situation, it had been tabled, we tried to squeeze it into next year and we said if we could buy it late in this year, not take delivery till 2017 and take that out of next year's budget, and we couldn't do that because of our financial situation. And I'm grateful to the residents of Seven Hills that they passed the taxes that were on the last ballot and because of that, we were able to take this as one of the very first things, items, that we said when we had the money, we're not, we're trying to give the city the best we can. The city voted and said, yes, we feel we want these things, and that's why this council now is passing this for that, I'm very grateful to the city.
Thank you, councilman. Please call the roll from the top.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Fandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
That was for amendment.
Ordinance number 89-2016 has been amended to add the emergency clause, is there a further motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that on ordinance number 89-2016, that we pass amended ordinance 29-16.
Please make the motion to read it first and then there'll be a second motion to pass.
I make a motion to read by title only.
Thank you. Tim?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Fandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 89-2016, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Treffus, Fandorf, Kranek, Bicker, Biassiata, Kukrow and Petro, in ordinance to appropriate a sum not to exceed $33,895.78 for the purchase of one 2017 Ford Utility Interceptor Police Vehicle with the pertinences for use by the Uniform Patrol of the Police Department of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, said purchase to be made from statewide Ford through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing Contract. The 2017 Ford Utility Interceptor shall be ordered in November 2016 for delivery in year 2017 with payment for the police vehicle appropriated from the 2017 budget.
Amended ordinance number 89-2016 has been read for its third and final reading, is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 89-2016.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you so much, I'm 100% on board with the purchase of this police car, considering that this council promised if the levies passed, we'd make that a first priority, so I'll be voting yes on this. However, I'm still very concerned that we have not employed a vehicle preventative, preventative maintenance and vehicle cost tracking program for this department. Councilman Fandorf has been asking this for a long time now and has been belittled and rebuked at almost every instance instead of being applauded for it. How can we keep spending residents' tax dollars effectively unless we have that data? How much money could we have saved taxpayers over the past years if we had those records? Those are all good questions, right? Well, it's time to do it, no more waiting. Through the passage of these two monumental issues on the ballot last week, residents have trusted this council with their tax dollars and they're not going to stand by and let us spend their money without oversight, therefore. On behalf of all residents, I'm requesting the mayor enforce this to the police department management and have some type of program put in place by the beginning of 2017. It is the administration's responsibility to direct his departments and this city has gone on way too long without this and frankly, it should have been done years ago. Mr. Mayor, I've done some homework on this and I wish to help get the ball rolling. I've spent some time over the past few months looking for information regarding setting up programs like this, as well as I found very inexpensive software options that are created for law enforcement that should be considered. I'll forward you the hours and hours of research and findings tomorrow and I'm asking you to sit down with the police management and get them to institute some of these procedures and programs. That way in the future, when this council is asked to purchase a new vehicle, we can look at the data and make a fact-based determination that is justified. We cannot operate on the policies of the past any longer, it's time for Seven Hills to look ahead and take our city into the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilman, any further comment? I just want to mention that we did indeed commit to purchasing this police car if issues 91 and 92 passed, I'm very pleased that we can do this. I did send an email to the police chief and the two lieutenants, informing them that we are passing tonight and inviting the chief to the meeting and I received no response. Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Fandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes. Amended ordinance number 89-2016 has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number 90-2016. I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 90-2016 by title only for its second and final reading.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata?
Yes.
Fandorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treffus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 90-2016, introduced by Councilman Treffus, Fandorf, Kranek, Bicker, Biassiata, Kukrow and Petro, in ordinance to appropriate a sum not to exceed $33,895.78 Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance amending sections 1501.01, .03, and .04 of the codified ordinances of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, in order to increase the municipal income tax rate from 2% to 2.5% beginning January 1, 2017, to provide funds for the purposes of general municipal functions, maintenance, new equipment, extension, enlargement, and improvement of municipal services and facilities, and capital improvements of the municipality, including the payment of debt service charges on notes and bonds issued for such purposes and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 90-2016 has been read for its second and final reading, and I will make a motion to pass ordinance number 90-2016.
Second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? I'd like to mention that this ordinance is being passed tonight because issue 92 was approved by the voters last week, and I want to make a comment about this. In 2012, my first year on city council, I began promoting this income tax change, and I promoted it again in 2013, and 14, and 15, and finally, when this new council got elected, we decided to move forward on this. And if we would have implemented this change in 2012, it would have generated $600,000 annually for a total to date of $2,400. That's $2,400 of lost money because previous councils and this current mayor would not support this idea. Frankly, it would have been a game changer for us financially, and it's really a shame that it took this long to get this passed, and I am so very grateful to our residents who voted for this to help their city. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 90-2016 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 110-2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance 110-2016 by title only for its third reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 110-2016, introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilperson Treifus, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the District Advisory Council of the Cogga County General Health District for the purpose of providing public health services for the year 2017.
Ordinance number 110-2016 has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we pass ordinance 110-2016.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 110-2016 has passed. For ordinance number 118-2016, I'm going to recuse myself and turn the gavel over to Councilman Frondorf.
Okay, excuse me, we'll now entertain a motion for ordinance number 118-2016, and I will make that motion. I move that council suspend the rules under the Charter and reads ordinance number 118-2016 by title only for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance. Ordinance number 118-2016, introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, a moral claim authorizing and directing the deputy finance director to pay Matthew A. Treifus of Seven Hills, Ohio, the sum of $5,490 for reimbursement of attorney fees incurred in Parma Court Case Number 15CRB03959 and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 118-2016 has been read for its final reading. I will now make a motion to pass ordinance number 118-2016.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Council President Pro Tem. I wish Michelle was still here, you know. I think most people know me, I'm pretty much a straight shooter, I'm new to this whole thing. Got involved in city council stuff about two years ago, started coming to meetings. What I witnessed with what happened to Matt was unbelievable. I can't believe that he was targeted in such a way, and the charges were just, to me, completely ridiculous. So, someone wants to ask me why I support paying this man's legal fees? Because in my opinion, this man was targeted by political opponents in an old-school Seven Hills thing that's been going on for a while, that people don't want to see him succeed. And frankly, I can't see any other thing, reason either. It seems to me that those people want to see Seven Hills fail, and that blows my mind, that people would rather see the city get hurt just to go after somebody they don't like. So, I support this moral claim, because frankly, Mr. Treifus has done more, spent more time, spent more money than any single person to advance this city forward. And let's talk about, his entire involvement to the city has been about moving it forward. He's reached into his own pocket to the tune of thousands and thousands of dollars. I would bet you probably five, six times the amount of that moral claim, out of his own money, to educate residents and pass levies like the two recent ones, which have in no question passed because of the things he did, and he has in fact helped save the city from financial ruin. I will also bring up the $2.4 million that was potentially lost off the backs of people that live in other cities that we could have had over the past six years, but former administrations, current, and past councils just said, "You don't know what you're doing, kid." Well, guess what? Now he's in charge, he does know what he's doing, and he did it. So, if Mr. Tamiko was here, I'd say, "I got no problem paying $5,000 bill for something that was completely bogus from a gentleman who did nothing wrong, was targeted by political opponents, and frankly, is old Seven Hills, and a man who has spent his own money to help improve this city, and frankly, could have generated over $2 million for this city, and will continue to do so." So, we should really be lucky to have a guy like Matt Treifus running this show over here, because if we didn't have him, we would not be in the position we are in today. So, that's why I support this moral claim. Thanks, Matt.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman. You know, I've been here quite a while. I've worked under 11 administrations, 11 mayors, and just the past three are the only ones who accepted anonymous complaints. The other mayors from, I started with Germana to Treifus, if you're going to complain, you had to sign it. But then, then that changed, and I find it shocking and scary that you could narc on your neighbor and hide, and that's what happened here. Nobody stood up there, nobody took ownership, and it's costing people money. So, I support paying this money, and I'll support anybody. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance 118-2016 has passed.
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem Frondorf. Moving on to ordinance number 119-2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspends the rules under the Charter and reads ordinance 119-2016 by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 119-2016, introduced by Councilman Treifus, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Aquadoc of Sheridan, Ohio, for the purpose of providing the 2017 Winter Protection Program for two city Seven Hills Fountains, one Seven Hills Recreation Complex and one Service Department Somerset, with appurtenances appropriating the sum not to exceed $250 for said winter protection service and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 119-2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that we pass ordinance 119-2016.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd just like to say that, for those of you in the audience, when you're reading the verbiage, and it talks about winter protection program for two Seven Hills Fountains, it almost sounds like we have some Roman gardens out there. But I just want to clarify, the one on Somerset, which is right adjacent to where I live, yeah, I guess you could call it a fountain, but its real purpose is to keep the water aerated. It's a detention basin, and it controls some mosquitoes, and that's, that's the purpose of that.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 119-2016 has been passed. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 120-2016.
Ordinance number 120-2016, introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Treifus, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the American National Red Cross, for the purpose of using the city's Seven Hills Recreation Complex as a temporary refuge for disaster victims.
Ordinance number 120-2016 has been read for its first reading. We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number 121-2016.
Ordinance number 121-2016, introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Treifus, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance authorizing the city of Seven Hills to enter into an agreement commencing January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2019, in an amount not to exceed $60 per full-time police department employee per month, with Ohio AFSCME Care Plan for the furnishing of dental Level IV Care Plan benefits for qualified full-time police department employees, and authorizing and directing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Seven Hills any and all documents necessary to implement and give force and effect to said dental Level IV Care Plan coverages.
Ordinance number 121-2016 has been read for its first reading. We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number 122-2016.
Ordinance number 122-2016, introduced by Mayor Delaculla and Councilman Treifus, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance authorizing the city of Seven Hills to enter into an agreement commencing January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2019, in an amount not to exceed $60 per full-time director and/or administrator per month with Ohio AFSCME Care Plan for the furnishing of dental Level IV Care Plan benefits for qualified full-time city of Seven Hills directors and administrators, and authorizing and directing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Seven Hills any and all documents necessary to implement and give force and effect to said dental Level IV Care Plan coverages.
Ordinance number 122-2016 has been read for its first reading. We'll now have the first reading of ordinance number 123-2016.
Ordinance number 123-2016, introduced by Councilman Treifus, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with InfoShred.net of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $1,500 for 2017 shredding services, April 11 and August 15, 2017, for the city of Seven Hills.
Ordinance number 123-2016 has been read for its first reading. We'll now move on to ordinance number 124-2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and amend ordinance number 124-2016 by adding an emergency.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 124-2016 has been amended. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read amended ordinance 124-2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes. Yes.
Amended ordinance number 124-2016, introduced by Councilman Treifus, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance to appropriate a sum not to exceed $49,500 for the purchase of one Jacobson R311T four-wheel-drive air ride suspension seat mower with appurtenances for use in the Service Department of the city of Seven Hills. Said purchase to be made from Baker Vehicle Systems of Macedonia, Ohio, through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Office of State Purchasing Contract and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number, amended ordinance number 124, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 124, 2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trafis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 124, 2016 has passed. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 125, 2016.
Ordinance number 125, 2016 introduced by Councilman Trafis, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral and Petro. And ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio with Lampian Companies of Wattsworth, Ohio for the purpose of maintaining the traffic signals and lighting throughout the city of Seven Hills for the period covering January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017 and appropriating an amount not to exceed $6,000 for said service.
Ordinance number 125, 2016 has been read for its first reading. Moving on to the first reading of ordinance number 126, 2016.
Ordinance number 126, 2016 introduced by Councilman Trafis, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral and Petro. And ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Westland Heating and Air Conditioning of Westlake, Ohio for the purpose of maintaining the seven rooftop units, the Suresco unit, three water heaters, three boilers and two exhaust fans for a period of one year at the city's Seven Hills Recreation Complex in an amount not to exceed $6,875 for said service.
Ordinance number 126, 2016 has been read for its first reading. Okay, we'll move on to amended or, I'm sorry, wrong page. Resolution number 65, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution 65-2016 for its first reading and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trafis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Resolution number 65, 2016 introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Trafis, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral and Petro. A resolution enacting a 12-month moratorium on the cultivation or sale of medical marijuana until the state of Ohio creates licensing and regulatory guidelines which are due September 2017 and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number 65, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we adopt resolution 65-2016.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trafis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Resolution number 65, 2016 has been adopted. Moving on to resolution number 66, 2016.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biaseata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read resolution 66-2016.
I'll second that.
By title alone for its first and final reading.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trafis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Resolution number 66, 2016 introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Trafis, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral and Petro. A resolution amending resolution number 51, 2016 passed by council September 13, 2016 amending the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency.
Resolution number 66, 2016 has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion? Councilman Biaseata.
Sorry. Mr. President, I move that we adopt resolution 66-2016.
Second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trafis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Resolution number 66, 2016 has been adopted. We are now moving on to resolutions 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72 and 73, 2016.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I'm going to make a motion to include all those resolutions. This is part of the Hemlock project so we don't have to vote on every one of them voted as a whole if there's no division of the questions. So I'll make a motion to read resolutions 66, 2016, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72 and 73 by title alone.
Frank, you don't need to read them all. Just ask to adopt those ordinances and read the names of the people who are granting us easements. Just keep it simple.
Well, according to the law director, I'll make a motion to read those numbers I told you and the names of the people who are selling these.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Mr. Law Director?
I'll read them. I've got to call the roll.
Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trafis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Resolutions number 67 through 73 all introduced by Mayor Delacola and Councilman Trafis, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral and Petro. They're resolutions approving and accepting temporary utility easements granted to the city by Robert W. Bader and John and Rose Marie Simansky. Okay, Gary and Bruce Chipka, that one's $380, former one was $620. 69, Marlene Fitzsimmons, $310. Angelo and Amber Angelus, $310. Teresa Fleischer, $310 rather. Matthew B. Sobey, $310. And Casimir Watzitz, $310. Together with all appurtenances appropriating some not to exceed what I just read and declaring an emergency at all.
Resolutions number 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72 and 73 have been read for their first and final reading. Is there a further motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no division of the question, I move that we adopt resolution 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72 and 73.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trafis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Resolutions number 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72 and 73 have been adopted. Okay, council will now be open to the audience on any matter that you wish to speak about. If you have any comments, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Is anybody in the first row?
224 Crescent Ridge Drive.
Welcome back.
Tom Jerris, 224 Crescent Ridge Drive. First of all, congratulations, 91, 92. Congratulations to voters who saved the city. Absolutely necessary. Glad they believed us. I wanted it, you wanted it. 93, disaster. You guys better take some kind of action to make sure that somebody else doesn't come in, use a charter amendment to dictate staffing. I didn't agree that it was something you should have accepted, but I'm told that some law somewhere agreed that it was legitimate. It's wrong, it doesn't belong in the charter. Do something. Get a charter amendment in there and say that you cannot use the charter to mandate staffing. Really easy. 94, you stepped on my First Amendment rights and you're a bunch of bums. You want to just leave it at that. This was a really nice history session tonight. Great to hear all this stuff. I was so thrilled to hear Draganic's name. If Draganic really was responsible for these cameras, I'm just astounded.
At least Channel 19.
Draganic was, I've been coming to these meetings, most of you know, I think most of you know, since 2012, about time Matt got to office, I started coming to meetings. Came a lot, a lot of meetings. A lot of times me and Tim were the only people at the meetings. That's how I met him. Got a great deal of respect for him because of it. Draganic was probably, probably the singularly least qualified person that I ever saw on that dais. He was a disaster. He didn't know the basics. And when voters put you guys in and did a little swamp cleaning, sorry, that was really the start of a swamp cleaning right there. I don't really give a damn about anything that came as a result of that bunch. My dislike of the whole crew is well-known. What Matt did, the circumstances he did it under, I knew about Longbow before Matt did because I just happened to do a Google search and bingo, there were the minutes of the independence meeting. And they talked all about Longbow and the money and what they were doing. Now, I don't know that we could have done anything to salvage that situation. I think a precedent's been set here. Longbow got taken by them. We just took somebody else back from independence. We're financing building owners, giving them money so they can help bring people here. We're going to slowly but surely just PO our tax base here anyhow. But I don't, I don't agree with any of this. I think this is something that's going to keep on going up and back and that gain is going to be a loss for both cities if we do this. But Matt's involvement, how it got spun or whatever, that's all in the past. That's done. He apparently thought he was doing the right thing. I don't think he's boneheaded enough, even though his indignation's graduate, that he would have thought he could do something illegal under the microscope of the swamp and get away with it. So we got to be real here. He probably dresses himself and everything. I can't believe he did anything deliberately. And if you sit up there, I've tried to sit up there a couple of times, I tried to be mayor. Spent a lot of money doing it. I'm sort of glad I didn't because Seven Hills politics is Seven Hills politics. But I like it to be gone. Ifs and buts, candies and nuts, every day would be Christmas, that kind of stupid stuff. We just need to put that behind us. Now we've got a new start. You guys got some real money to work with unless you lose your minds and just start blowing money away. I think we're on the cusp of doing something really good in this city. And I'd like to see it happen. I really would. I hope, I hope we can be successful in this. And while we're at it, Mr. Pignatello, I apologize in advance. As you all know because you approved my appointment to the Planning Commission, I came to you a month ago and told you I still, I'm being prevented from being functional in that position. And the Planning Commission deal is really important to me. I was happy when the mayor appointed me. I was happy when you approved me. But not being able to function, it's right now boils down to, she Assistant Law Director, what is Christine Tobin's title? Assistant?
Yes.
As the Assistant Law Director, she came in early on in this discussion of the Rockside Development Area and said questions had been raised. There was a possibility that I might do something that might be seen somehow as having a prejudice involved. And if we lined up a whole bunch of ifs and maybes and possibles and could be, then maybe the city could be in trouble if I participated. First couple of meetings, I wasn't even allowed to be in the room. The idea is my presence in the room, I'd be giving somebody the whammy eye or something and fluids a vote. It's, I wish I knew how to do that Milwaukee crap, but I don't know how. But anyhow, I'm not even allowed to be in a room. By not being allowed to be in a room, I'm losing background on something that I think's really important. The last Planning Commission quit en masse because of me, because I was talking about accountability. I want to be accountable, but I can't be accountable for anything because I can't even be in a room. A month ago, Mr. Pignatello, you said you were going to send her an email. I think the mayor said he was going to say something. I've heard nothing. I get no answer. Period. This is the black hole of law that I like to use. Stuff goes in, nothing comes out. And I'm sitting out here doing nothing. Now I understand we're looking for another Planning Commission member. A great opportunity, I think, is on our doorstep with what I've seen so far. LSB seems to really want to do something. And it's like, we're trying to see just how long we can delay them and maybe just piss them off so he says, I'm just going to hold my property and you guys, God bless you.
Tom, I have to cut you off with that. We are not trying to delay LSB. This city council has done everything we can-
I didn't point a finger at anybody.
-to move that project forward. I want to make that clear.
Chill, dude. I didn't point a finger at anybody. I said, I'm seeing this thing. It looks like there's feet being dragged for the sake of dragging and I don't get it. I understand caution. I understand error in the direction of caution, but this is just dragging out way too long. And my being prevented from participating is wrong. And unless Christine Tobin, I'm not even sure that she's legitimate. Christine Tobin is in charge of this deal because Mr. Pignatello's brother owns an interest in some of the property that's to be developed. So he has to recuse himself. That's admirable. But Christine Tobin serves at his pleasure. He could fire her tail. So what kind of insulation is that for somebody that might want to say, oh, there's a conflict? I don't think there has been is one. And if Christine Tobin can't make a decision, she's, this portion of her job should be taken away from her and let somebody else make the decision. Go to Pamet Squires or find the highest priced attorney in the world and get an answer from there because that seems like that's what will do any. But you guys needed, I think you need to do something. I think where you have an opportunity and that strike when the iron is hot crap, that applies here. I don't see any reason in delaying this. And I don't expect an answer. I just expect something to happen. I want to be a part of this. I really want to be a part of this. I believe I could have a contribution here. And something's got to be done. I mean, poke Christine or push her out of the way or do whatever you got to do, but I can't even get an answer.
I'm not going to debate you, but I've got things to say.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Well, neither I or Christine or your lawyer, we don't really advise you whether or not you have a conflict interest. Neither one of us can stop you from being on that board. You're on the board. I was told that you recused yourself because of a conflict. You know I'm not involved, so I don't know everything. But Christine isn't preventing you from being able to participate in the Planning Commission. That's solely up to you. And I'm not going to give you a whole, the legal advice here on the floor. I'll be happy to talk to you after as a courtesy because like I said, we're not your private attorneys.
I get it.
You know, I would have 12,000 customers lined up tomorrow if just gave advice to everybody in the city that wanted us. But it's not the law department that's stopping you from doing your Planning Commission duties.
Okay. I'm going to assume that your recusal been genuine and you don't know the facts. The very first, okay, well, let me tell you because I was there. The very first meeting, I was called out of the meeting and that was with Mayor Delacola, correct? Christine Tobin? I don't remember that the chairman of the Planning Commission was in on that. Matt, were you there?
I was there and so was the chairman of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Vince, Vince Rupa. I haven't seen a guy this long, I'm forgetting. At that meeting, I was told some postings that I made on Facebook had been brought up by the people who are developing the smaller parcel. And those postings showed that, these were postings that were made during the issue 87 attempt at rezoning that we defeated. And some of those postings weren't flattering for them. They were truth, but it wasn't flattering and they took exception, so they were going to say I could have a bias because of those postings. Now, subsequent, and I was told that I couldn't participate in the meeting, period. That was Christine Tobin. And the mayor was there for that and he heard that deal. So I left the meeting. Then I went to the second meeting. When I went to the second meeting, same deal. Yank the Polack out of the chair, take them over in a room. You're a bad boy, sister's going to punish you. This time, the mayor said, well, the first stuff was sort of like political, stuff on Facebook, yeah, whatever. But now they understand that I'm involved in litigation somewhere and I could have a bias because of this litigation. And I'm a board member of a nonprofit corporation that is suing one of the entities that own property there. But until I exhibited some sort of bias, we're erring, we're erring on the side of caution, but we got to pile up about 15 if comes that maybe I look like a bad guy and maybe they take action against me or against the city. And this is a deal again where I can't even be in the room because the whammy eyes mess it up. I'm losing all the background. Now, we're taking a real stretch. If maybe possible someday could be, if I don't die first, I could show bias, then we're in trouble. And what this winds up being is developers having way too much say in the development process in Seven Hills, which was my original bitch going in. Because I'm not making this up. I wanted to do a job. And if you're saying she doesn't have the authority to do that, I'll be at the next meeting and any subsequent meeting. And if the property involving land songs discussed, I'll keep my mouth shut. I won't vote. I won't look at anybody. I won't make hand gestures.
She may have advised you that, I think clearly there's more than an appearance of a conflict interest on your behalf, uh, on your part. But if you choose to ignore that and go forward, I think you're operating outside the scope of a planning commission member. And if push comes to shove and you get sued, I don't know that the city would defend you because you're acting on your own.
Yeah, okay. You said you were gonna be my lawyer. I got that part. I'll, I'll be attending meetings after this one. And I'll act accordingly. And I'll expect whatever protection I get as an officer of the city. But thank you for this. I wish we could have done this a month ago. Life would have been a lot easier. Thank you very much. Sorry for taking up all the time.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody further in the audience?
Jerry Trevis, 990, Aspenwood. Um, first off, I wish Michelle was here because I, I want to apologize to her if she thinks that I kind of got into her space for her comments. I could have sworn she said she had one question and she was done. Um, so I know her, her young son was upset with that, so if, um, if she was here, I would tell her, "Sorry for, for, for possibly that." The other thing is, I want to make sure that I had, I did have a chance to talk to her before. I never really met her before. And, um, there's, she, she did either gross injustice or maybe some communication uh, regarding uh, her and her husband's sign company. And Mayor, maybe you can help on this. Uh, she seems to believe that the work that she was providing as a contractor, her husband was providing as a contractor, uh, went away. And I know that she was good friends with Jack Mulga, the service director, and I think the signage that goes up, um, you know, could be under his auspices. And, uh, for some reason, they're not getting that particular contract anymore. Now, I know it's not a bid process because it's not that big. I, I don't think it's a bid process because I don't think it's over, I don't even know what the number is now, 2,500 or 5,000 or whatever. But I know that the purchasing agent uh, still has responsibility to make sure you can get the better and best. And she alluded to that. And don't get mad, Matt, she's gonna say this. She alluded that you stopped her from having um, signs being made, which, and then she went, then she brought in its whole trade. So I guess I'm in there too. Um, so I, I think there's either an injustice or some miscommunication. So, you know, Rick or whoever, if you could review um, the procedures for bidding, uh, I mean, heck, if they're doing a good job and that's who you guys think should be used, use them. I just want to make sure that everybody's treated equally and I just want to tell you what I thought I heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody further? Okay. Move on to reports and communications from the Mayor and Safety Director, Mayor Delacuilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just want to say congratulations to our residents for passing issues 91 and 92 on November 8th. After years of seeking more tax revenue, this will allow Seven Hills to conduct business as a fully operational, modern city should. No one enjoys paying more taxes and no one on this dais enjoyed asking our residents for more money. However, we've been saying all along over these years of cuts and reductions that the final piece of the puzzle has always been a tax increase of some sort. That's what the failed 2014 police levy was in fact all about. The difference this time in 2016 is that everyone here put aside past differences and worked together for the benefit of the city without worrying about taking credit. This included current and former elected officials, residents and employees. Our firefighters especially earned particular recognition for making the staffing of their departments so important to the passage of both issues 91 and 93. They immediately understood the danger when the idea was floated in council to cut that staffing and quickly obtained over 1,400 petition signatures to place issue 93 on the ballot. Whether everyone agreed that the charter should be amended for this purpose, their fundamental message about the critical importance of protecting residents' safety clearly resonated with voters. Without a doubt, issue 91 would have never passed. It was a very close vote. It would have never passed without the firefighters going to bat for this city with such an organized and well-funded campaign on issue 93. The city owes them a debt of gratitude. I think these issues also benefited from an overall area-wide shift in public awareness of the need to maintain essential governmental operations. We saw this in the renewal of the Parma school levy and the passage of so many other tax measures throughout the region. Timing is everything. So where does this leave Seven Hills? City revenue had already improved significantly in 2016 before the election last week. In the first 10 months of the year, we brought in about $660,000 in additional income, about $533,000 in delinquent income taxes, and roughly $125,000 in estate taxes from prior years. Assuming year-end spending will be roughly as currently projected, this will mean that the year-end 2016 general fund balance will be around $2.7 million higher than the estimated number at the beginning of the year. The issue 91 and 92 money, which is anticipated to be collected in 2017, will be just under $1 million. And the city is also receiving offers for land on Rockside Road, which has been appraised at $1.1 million. All this would allow a year-end 2017 rough projected general fund balance of around $4.3 million. Seven Hills will collect even more in 2018 when the full effect of issues 91 and 92 will be realized. The positive result of all this is that Seven Hills can now work on a very substantial 2017 streets program and have already charged our engineers with the responsibility of beginning that planning. We can pay down some of our debt and our bond rating will be more secure. We can properly staff the city, finally replace our full-time finance director, a position which has been left unfilled since February, by offering a competitive salary for this critical position. And yes, even consider restoring our home days event, a tradition so important to all our residents, both young and old. In the past few weeks, I've been working on three versions of the 2017 budget to propose to council. I've been euphemistically referring to these ideas as the good, the bad, and the ugly. Now that our voters have improved our financial outlook by this vote, I will eliminate the last two ideas. I will now submit a single, realistic budget proposal that permits the city to be staffed properly and to operate efficiently to provide and maintain the services our residents expect and deserve and told us that they want in this last election. Once again, thank you to everyone who helped to finally get this done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, reports from the Directors of Departments and other officials. Um, Law Director, Richard Pignatello. Thank you. Uh, Director of Service and Public Property, Stuart LeVie.
Yes, Mr. President. I want to pay my compliments to Helen Bacala, who also retired. And I worked with her. She's from the Finance Department. Another hardworking, excellent, dedicated employee who saved the city a lot of money over the years. And, uh, I just wanted to compliment her. And I wanted to wish two council people happy birthday. Uh, one today, Tony today, and Matt yesterday. So happy birthday to to council people.
Thank you, Stuart.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, um, moving on to council miscellaneous, let's begin with Councilman Frondor.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Uh, I'd like to speak directly to our residents in attendance and those of you that will be viewing this or may be viewing this via the internet. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you uh, to the voters for your trust and faith in this council. Um, and the endorsement of, uh, our direction for this city. Um, if it wasn't for you, um, passage of 91 and 92 wouldn't have happened. So again, thank you for your trust and uh, endorsement for what we're doing. I'm, I'm going to just echo, you know, a little bit of change that that I've seen on this dais. And I know that, um, um, President Tom Jaros made a comment about one or two people being present in the, in the audience during council meetings. I started attending council meetings in 2010, December of 2010, as a matter of fact. And, um, just outwardly, what I saw was, was, was almost laughable. Um, we had, uh, we had a mayor at the time that would show up in shorts and flip flops and a ball cap, unshaven and a t-shirt. Uh, we had other council representatives that were not too far behind him when it came to uh, how they dressed. And, and quite honestly, um, I take decorum and, um, the seriousness of, seriousness of the job uh, as, as hallmarks. And if you look on this dais, you'll, one thing that you'll notice, I, I think everyone, every council person is wearing a sport coat, suit or a, and a tie. And what that is a reflection of is the seriousness with which we take this job. Now, just, I'm just gonna say just a few more things. And I'm gonna say, despite what the mayor said, uh, what he may desire in his, uh, good uh, 2017 budget proposal, I can assure all the residents at, in Seven Hills that as Chairman of the Finance Committee, I will assure you our residents of continued strict oversight of your tax dollars and city assets. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Frondor. Councilman Pietro.
Mr. Chairman, I have no comments.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kuprow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I do have some comments. I've got a couple pages. I apologize to Mr. Biassata on your birthday. But I'm gonna extend this a little bit longer. On November 8th, 2016, the residents of the city of Seven Hills chose to change the city forever, first through the passage of issue 91, the fire levy, and second through the passage of issue, the income tax plan, issue 92. Now, let's be clear. The passage of both of these issues have single-handedly saved our city from financial ruin. And I don't say that like this fact is not disputable. We're now faced with a very different future for the city. Instead of a future where roads don't get fixed and services get cut to the bone, we're now a city that can breathe a little bit. And we can make the city better through road programs, giving residents the level of services they demand. Congratulations to everyone in the city, including all city employees, the residents, everyone in the administration, and yes, the members of the Contract for Seven Hills and the rest of the city council. It wasn't easy, but we did it. Now the hard work begins for this council. We have to make sure to do all the things to keep your tax, tax dollars in check, as Mr. Frondor sets. But I do want to talk today about how we got here, because it's really important. How did this council take a city on the verge of bankruptcy to a city with a surplus of funds potentially in so little time? When former councils and administrations said it wasn't possible? Allow me a little time to take a little victory lap here. I know the mayor doesn't want to say we shouldn't take credit, but darn it. There's some credit needs to be given and I want to get this out because everyone really needs to understand what happened. It's time to give credit where credit is due. It really was 100% of the voters who believed in this council and our plans to fix this city. Thank you so much. You trusted our, this council with your votes in 2015. Then you backed it up with another landslide mandated win on the issues we promoted in 2016. We put it in your hands, you decided, and that's how it should be. But it's imperative for everyone to understand what had to happen, what, and what did happen for us to get to this point, because I really don't think many people realize the behind the scenes of what was done and how terribly difficult and costly it was to some of us on this council financially and personally. First, let's talk about how the members of the Contract for Seven Hills won this election on the issues. This was the time-consuming concerted effort that started over a year ago when we all campaigned on the income tax plan. After we were all elected, we all continued to work to campaign for that plan, knowing we would put it on the ballot in 2016. And we did. Along the way, we came up with a plan to put a new money fire levy on the ballot as well. At first, we were just going to do a renewal, but it became very clear to us that residents wanted to support the fire department. So we upped the renewal to an increase, much to the dismay of the fire department and other people in the administration who said we shouldn't do it. Guess what? It did. During the past six months, the members of the Contract for Seven Hills spent hundreds of hours of our personal time creating and distributing materials online and in print that explained the issues. This cost us personally thousands of dollars of our own money. All the while, fighting pushback from the fire department who campaigned to break down and tell, to break us down and tell people we didn't care about their safety. And they simply refused to support their own issue 91, their own levy. But we knew what we were doing. And we sloughed off the attempts to discredit us and move forward. Why? Because we knew we were doing the right thing for the residents and we wanted to give them their voice. We knew that we could sell both issues. And we knew if we worked as hard as we did the year before, the residents would trust up and show us and vote. Uh, which would trust us and show up and vote. So everyone should realize something. Previous councils didn't do what we have done to promote issues and get them to try and pass. Let me give you an example. Mayor brought up the police levy. A few years ago, council attempted to put a police levy on the ballot. I remember because I was in the caucus meeting when they decided to do it. I was sitting in the audience. It really wasn't a police levy. It was called that, but it was really a way to free up money from the general fund. However, council leadership knew at the time that they couldn't sell it. They couldn't sell it that way. So they decided to call out a police levy. And guess what? It failed miserably. And the, and the question is why? Because besides the fact that this was ill-conceived and marketed wrong, all they did to promote it was send a letter on the city's dime. Nobody dipped into their own pockets and tried to convince voters it was the right thing to do, because they didn't believe in it. That's not what happened this time. We not only created a real solution to the city's financial problem, but we also sold it by educating residents. The members of the Contract for Seven Hills wrote, designed, planned, strategized, stuffed, and hand-delivered a six-page detailed explanation on the issues to every home in the city at our cost, thousands and thousands of dollars. Then we took it a step further and set out an absentee chaser to thousands of people along with a final mailing to the rest of the voters days before the election. All to the tune of thousands of dollars more of our own money. In the absentee chaser part, Councilmen Frondor and Trevis dipped into their own pockets for sending that first-class mail to thousands of homes. How else did we sell it? Don't forget the thousands of people who view our Facebook pages and interact with us and learn about the city every single day in an open and transparent policy. Then, once again, not for our own elections, but for the issues facing the residents of this city, we stood 13 hours at the polls in the rain, answering questions about the issues and handing out information on them at our own expense and time. So why do we do this? We do this, and why do we spend our own money to do this stuff? Um, you know, we have a plan to fix the city. We promised you guys we were gonna do it. And we, and we stepped up and did it. So I will take the credit and I will let the other gentleman up here take the credit. So let's talk about some specific things. First, I want to give thanks to Councilman Frank Pietro and Councilman Tom Kranek, parts of the members of the Contract for Seven Hills. Both these gentlemen have sacrificed combined, I think, 50-plus years of public service to the city. Uh, pretty amazing. I sit here between both these men every other week, Tom to my left, Frank to my right. And I'm reminded it's people like this that set the example on how to serve a community. Both of them bring a steady, experienced hand to this council and we should, I'll be grateful to have them up here. I certainly am. Thanks to you both. Also want to point out that Councilman Biassata prepared and sent his own newsletter at his own expense to his ward. And newly appointed Councilman Bicker was very active in promoting issues as well. Uh, the mayor did produce a few signs. But really, there are two main people we all need to be thanking today, and that is Councilman Tim Frondor and Council President Matt Trevis. I singled out these two because in my opinion, these two gentlemen are the two biggest fighters for this city and deserve the credit for this, as they have done the most for the city in these issues. People don't realize this. First, I want to say a few things about Councilman, uh, War II Councilman Tim Frondor. Now, you may disagree with Tim at times and you may, uh, maybe his no BS attitude may rub you the wrong way. But let's be very clear. Tim has always had and still has one goal. And that is to watch guard the finances of this city and protect your pocketbook. And he has done that. Years and years ago, Tim sat in this audience as a resident and began dissecting the major issues facing, facing our city. Then he stood up, ran for office, won, and began to fight the system and begin exposing the broken path the city was traveling on. Until 2015, when the Contract for Seven Hills members disrupted the entire system and were elected, Tim was one of two people on council who railed against the system but was bullied down by those that did not agree with his ideas to fix the city. So his ideas never got implemented, considered, or put to voters. What a shame. But now as Chairman of the Finance Committee and Council Pro Tem, and with the passage of 91 and 92, Tim's tireless work has been justified. He has personally sacrificed his retirement to commit to this job and has spent thousands of dollars of his own money educating residents on the issues and defending himself through frivolous lawsuits and other bogus allegations. Many of which, many of which a lot of you will never, never even know about. And if you knew about, you would be appalled at. Most people who have had to go through what Tim has gone through would have walked away. Tim did not. He stuck it out and fought through it and has helped deliver the city a future we can be proud of. Thanks, Tim. Nobody will ever really know how much you do to sacrifice for this $7200-a-year job. And that's fine, but I know, and now the residents know, and thanks for doing what you do. Also have to talk about Council President Matt Treifus. Having spent the last few years working closely with Matt, I now know that he truly and deeply cares for this city. To every person who says he has some other political motive, I'll say this to you. You have absolutely no idea what this man does for this city. No idea whatsoever. To all those that wanted to see him fail, he didn't. To all those that wanted to bring him down and stop him from fixing the city, he can't. He's too committed and too smart, and his intentions are too pure. It sounds like I'm getting paid to say this. I'm not. But I really feel like this. Like Matt or dislike him, and the vast majority of people do like him, you can't ask for a better person in the world to do his job as Council President and the de facto leader of this city. He truly cares for the future of the city. He lives and breathes this city. And he would and has personally sacrificed not only his personal life, but his own money to fix this city. And we should all be thankful to have him. And he's not going to stop either. So thanks, Matt. Nobody will ever know how much you really care and how much you do, but I know, and now residents know. So thank you. It's appreciated. In closing, back to my main point. Why did issue 91 and 92 pass? Why is our city safe from financial ruin? Because of the men sitting up here next to me who have sacrificed their time, expertise, families, and their own dollars. Residents need to understand something. We're not here for the paycheck. We're not here for ego. We're not here for power. It's a small town. All of us together are here to do the right thing and serve you the best way we can, because we're your neighbors. And we face the same problems you do every single day. With your votes of confidence, we've done just that, giving you a voice and giving you a choice in what direction you wish to see the city go in. And I can honestly say that in the 20 years I've lived in this city, there's never been a better team in place than the people sitting up here right now. It's not enough to just care. Everyone in the past who sat up here cared, sure. But they didn't do the work. That's the difference between this council and others. And that's why every resident needs to know what happened and what's going to continue to happen as long as these same people are up here fighting for you. In closing, I'm proud to say I get to be part of it all and the very, very, very bright future for Seven Hills this council has created and frankly, should be given credit for. Thank you for the time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Kukrow. Councilman Kranek.
I have nothing to say.
Councilman Bicker.
First of all, I would like to thank the retirees and congratulate them. And I want to point out that all of us up here are literally tiptoeing through legal minefields even when we do our jobs in good faith. It's definitely not easy. And finally, I want to point out, had Matt pled not guilty, this most likely would have costed the city tens of thousands of dollars. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Bicker. Councilman Biassata.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be real brief today, but I may revisit these issues later on. I want to apologize to my nieces who planned a birthday party for me, but they're in elementary school, and that's passed now. All right, a number of people in the audience today helped pass out my newsletter in support of 91 and 92. You know who you all are. Thank you for saving my knee a little. Appreciate the help. The message was heard. More on that later. Those that attend meetings regularly and those that have called upon me for assistance know that I'm a hard worker. Return every phone call, every email, and do my homework. And that's my continued pledge, is we move funny, move forward with the new money you've entrusted us, that we're still going to look at every line item and make sure you're getting your best bang for the buck. Lot of communication today in audience 118-2016. I voted yes. For very specific reasons, I'm going to monitor the situation. And I'm hoping for the best. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Biassata. And before I begin, I also want to thank the members of the audience who helped. Go on, Tony.
I just wanted to wish a happy belated birthday, Council President.
Well, thank you, and happy birthday to you. I do want to mention and thank the residents and the audience who helped Tony pass out the newsletter, because I had offered to help him as well, and that saved me a couple hours. Thank you. The past week or so has been pretty emotional around Seven Hills. I have a prepared statement, and I don't think I'm going to read all this. I'm just going to kind of speak from the heart right now. Jim, what you were saying earlier about everybody on council, I think is very true. There are a lot of hardworking people up here, all of us. And all of our intentions are good. And I appreciated your comments. And but Seven Hills is hard. This is a very difficult city to work in and represent. As everybody knows, I've grown up around it. And, you know, things were bad back in the 80s and 90s that I watched when I was a kid, but it's nowhere near what it's like today. I mean, I'm about to start my sixth year on City Council. And over the past few years, I've been sued. I've been arrested. I've been subpoenaed. I've been deposed. I deal with more lawyers than I ever want to deal with again. No offense, guys. You like that, Tom? And it's not stopping. When we finally turn the page on our history, we get informed that former members of City Council are contacting the media to start it all over again. We went through an absolutely horrendous time with former Mayor Benkowski suing the city and the mayor and the law director and myself and Councilman Frandorf and residents. And I can't remember who else was thrown into that lawsuit. But that page turned, and we got through it. And today should have been more of a celebration, frankly, than what it was. Once again, there's more than likely going to be a story on the media that will embarrass Seven Hills and some of the people that work for us. And that's okay. You know, we'll deal with it. But what this city accomplished last Tuesday changes our future. For over a decade, we're running deficits of over $1 million every year. In 2015, the residents said, "No, we're done. We're electing a new team." And we committed to changing the status quo. And it's happening. And we are we've challenged a broken culture. And it hasn't been easy. And we've made decisions that many people have not liked. There's been meetings where a couple hundred people would be in the room yelling at us over changes in job descriptions or reductions in salary or many other things, but it hasn't stopped us, and frankly, it's not going to. I love this city. I've dedicated my whole life to it. And you can sue me again. You can arrest me again. You can subpoena me. You can depose me. I'm not stopping. And I don't think anybody on this council is going to stop either. I'm very excited about what's to come. And there's going to be more hurdles along the way. But I can assure everybody that now that we have the resources to run the city the way we've always wanted it to run, we're not going to stop scrutinizing expenses. If we feel that there are cost reductions that we can make without affecting the day-to-day lives of our residents, we're going to make those cuts. I truly believe that the residents of Seven Hills didn't vote to increase property tax and change the income tax structure for us to spend money frivolously. That happened in the past. It's not happening again. So as we move forward in 2017, there's going to continue to be big changes. We're going to continue to break down the status quo. And if the residents like it, they'll vote for us again. If they don't, they don't. So I'm going to, I want to thank all of our residents who did vote for these levies. It means so much to us. I want to thank everybody on City Council for everything they did to get these levies passed. And I truly believe that 2017 is going to be a very good year for Seven Hills. We just need to figure out how to put some of these controversial issues in perspective, because it's all about doing what's best for a city of Seven Hills. Thank you. With that, I, oh, I have a zoning board of appeals variance I want to get through real quick. We discussed this in the caucus meeting. I'm going to make a motion to grant a variance to James Giore of 6189 Crossview Road, a 128-square-foot variance to ordinance number 963.02B6, storage shed, to allow the construction of a 16-by-24 storage shed not exceeding 12 feet in height on a parcel that's 35,000 square feet. Second that. Clear discussion. I'll also mention that the zoning board of appeals passed this unanimously. Please call the roll.
Biassata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Variance has been granted. And I just want to mention before we adjourn to Megan with Channel 5, thank you for sticking out this whole meeting. As you can see, there's two sides of every story. And in the future, please feel free to call me if you want to chat about any tips you may get. I'm always available. So with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. Please call the roll.
Biassata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Treifus.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Jim, would you sign the one ordinance for me, please? I have all kinds of pens. I have like a blue pen. Let me see if this works. Don't you want to talk to you? Oh, I know. I know. And that same name. Let me take it just to make sure that I I think I have some or something where it's good to have it right. Thank you. Okay, then. Thanks. Yeah, you would think, oh, what the hell?